I'm gonna call this meeting to order being six oh one, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Once again, a pre- pre-happy Valentine's to you all. Item, uh, item two will be invocation will be given to us by Pastor Marcos Uniga, Kingdom Church. Is Pastor Pastor in? There he is, how you doing, sir? Uh, then it'll be led by the Pledge of Allegiance, takes a pledge by Councilmember Thompson. Everyone wishing to join us for a moment of prayer can do so by standing up and join us for another. Pastor, do you have the record?
Heavenly Father, we come to you in the mighty name of Jesus, and we are just so thankful for our community, Odessa, Texas, God, Hector County, God, and the great citizens that are here, Father. Father, we are so thankful for all the servants that you have in this room, God, and those that are gonna be honored, Father. And I wanna just lift up every elected official that is here today, and those that have been appointed, Father. There are servants of yours, Lord God, to carry out your work, to keep peace and prosperity in this community. And so, Father, I lift up everyone by name, God, I lift up Ms. Norma, God, city secretary Dan Jones, city attorney, Ms. Dennis, Denise Swiner, God, Mark Motta, Stephen Thompson, Javier Hoven, Gilbert Vasquez, Greg Cornell, Chris Haney, God, John Beckmeyer, Father, and these take time of their busy schedule, Lord God, to make sure, God, that our community runs, God, in order. And we just pray for Holy Spirit wisdom on each and every one of them, God, as they take their time, God. And we ask that you would touch each one of them individually, Lord, uh, they, uh, to be able to participate in what they do, God. They leave behind families, God, and we just pray that you would just multiply that unto them, God. We lift up, God, our Chief of Police, Lord God, Mr. Kirkie, God, and, uh, our Sheriff, Heavenly Father, ask that you'd watch over them, God, in all their first responders. Father, uh, we are, uh, gatekeepers to this community, God, and we just pray for Holy Spirit wisdom, God, as we're taking care of this community that you've entrusted with us with, Lord. We pray a hedge of safety and protection over our community, God, that no evil will be let in, Heavenly Father. And each one of us, God, is responsible, God, for that, God, as we're respons- each one of us is responsible to you. We dedicate this time here this evening, God, as we, uh, lift you up, God, and service, God, and also we honor those that are in this room. In Jesus' name we pray. And everybody said?
Amen. Do you want me to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag?
Under the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Maybe seated. Real quickly, can everybody hear us in the back row? Thank you. We do have some proclamation, presentations, and awards?
Yes, we have one award.
One, one award? You have the floor, gentle.
Right here?
Yes, sir. You can, you can turn it around? Yeah, just, just turn down the whole, turn the whole table.
The podium.
The whole podium will turn the other way. Watch your, watch your, yeah, go, perfect.
All right.
You good?
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilman. Thank y'all, and woman, thank y'all for allowing us to be here tonight. It's a, a great honor for us to be here. So, answering the call, the VFW message is all about answering the call no matter what. Just like countless VFW comrades ran to the fight, so does our award recipient as well. Whether it's battling a five alarm fire to help young children cross the street at a crosswalk, and it just goes on and on. Chief Cotton never wavers or disregards to his duty to our community, our state, and nation. It's with distinct honor and absolute pleasure that I present to you the City of Odessa Fire Chief Jason Cotton, a part Paul G. Mahoney Post four-three-seven-two VFW firefighter award for twenty twenty-four. Chief?
This is awesome. I don't understand it, but thank you so much. I appreciate it. It's the men and women that work for OFR that do all the work. I just have the pleasure of leading them and guiding the way, I guess, but again, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any citizen wishing to make a comment on non-agenda items can do so by filling out a card, turning it into the City Secretary. You have three minutes to do so. Any member of the public may address the City Council regarding any of its agenda items before or during any consideration of said item. I'll ask the, uh, council to overlook the considered agenda as presented and entertain a motion for approval or amend. Also move. Have a motion for approval by Councilmember Vasquez to, for the considered agenda. We have a second, second by Councilmember Cornell, all in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passing unanimously, six oh. Going to the regular agenda, item six, consider accepting donation Phillips sixty-six to appropriate the funds of Odessa Fire Rescue. Is this a resolution? Uh, Chief Cornell? Yes, item five. Were you still taking pictures? Usually I have Assistant Chavez doing this.
I'd like to introduce to you Mayor and Council Jeremy Rankin and Mike Marine from Phillips sixty-six. Back in October, uh, they reached out to Chief Marks, actually, and wanted to make a donation to Odessa Fire Rescue. And we went through the paperwork, filled out the appropriate, appropriate, uh, papers and paperwork and required documents. Had a little bit of, uh, problems, little bumps in the road, but, but not too much, and, and it came back, and they are donating to us thirty-three thousand dollars.
Really appreciate it.
So, all I'm asking is consider accepting a donation from Phillips sixty-six and appropriate the funds to Odessa Fire Rescue.
All right. Anyone who make that motion? So moved. Have a motion by Councilmember Matt, the second by Councilmember Thompson. In accepting donation from Phillips sixty-six, appropriate the funds, uh, for Odessa Fire Rescue in the amount of thirty-three thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passing unanimously. Congratulations, and we thank you. The citizens of Odessa thank you very much.
Chief Cotton Day.
Every day Chief Cotton Day.
He's not dying either.
You got it filling that rock crusher? I had to get it out.
Oh, yeah. That was crazy.
It was nuts. Item six, we're gonna go ahead and skip item six, and we're gonna move on to the public hearing in item seven. Uh, open a public hearing to consider request by Renon Rock. Is it okay, Rock? I know I'm butchering it badly. For a specific use permit placed for repair and rebuilding a garage in Light Commercial Zone District. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, so this is a specific use permit that is required by our ordinance to bring it up to you guys to get the site plan review. Uh, they are, uh, gonna be, uh, using the site for a repair, rebuilding garage. Um, we did send it out to, um, internally for review, no objections were made. However, we are recommending, uh, nine conditions into this. And the reason why is because it's, uh, it's backing up to a church, and that church actually has a daycare center. So we just wanna make sure that we're good neighbors and that we're being respectful and still be able to have, uh, this use there. Based on our zoning, both, um, businesses can be in the same location. So we can have a garage, and we can have a church and a daycare center. But because of that, we are recommending the following conditions: that six vehicle parking spaces will be provided; that all wrecked and dismantled vehicles need to be stored inside the building or behind a solid screen fence; that the storage yard screening fence will need to be an eight-foot solid fence. Um, buildings will, uh, they will need to comply with all of our internal codes such as fire and our international building codes, electrical mechanical codes. Uh, also need to comply with our zoning ordinance. The hours of operations are limited to eight AM to six PM. The days of operation would be Monday through Saturday, and that the site plan also gets, um, approved with this. And it, all, the last one is that it leaves us a condition in where if we're having, um, complaints, it allows us to bring it back to you guys to see if we can continue it or we have to, uh, remove it.
Okay.
So therefore, staff is recommending approval. Uh, PNZ, our, our board did meet on January eighteenth, did suggest to, uh, change the hours to eight PM, but they were okay with six P- six PM, but just pointing it out.
Okay.
Now open for any questions.
Uh, has this been discussed? Uh, has there has been approval from the, uh, owners that they're okay with the conditions?
Correct.
Okay. Counsel, any questions?
Okay, what's that? Pretty straightforward, yeah.
All right. This is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to comment on item seven can do so by coming forward. And you can do that by filling out a card, stating your full name. You can do so by going, coming up to the podium. You have three minutes. Seeing that no one's coming forward to speak on this item, do we have someone?
Yeah.
Item seven?
No.
Seeing that there's no one coming forward for item seven to speak on this item, I will close the open hearing. Counsel, I entertain a motion for approval. So moved. Have a motion by Councilmember Thompson. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Councilmember Swanner, all in favor indicating by saying aye. Aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passing unanimously. Uh, we're gonna move on to item eight, open a public hearing to consider request for border engine, uh, yeah, border engine rebuilders and diesel services. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. So this one is, uh, zone change. Uh, it came in as a future development, therefore it now needs to have its zoning assigned to it. When it came in into city limits, it did come with an existing building, so they're reusing that building. And it's also gonna be another garage, service garage, and it's gonna be for heavy vehicles and for buses. Uh, we did not receive any objections for it. We did route it out to our internal, um, departments, no objections were made. Therefore, we're supporting this zone change.
Counsel, any questions? This is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. Is, uh, for item eight as presented, you have three minutes. State your full name. You can do so by coming forward to the podium now. Seeing once again that nobody rushed the podium to speak on this item, I will close the public hearing for item eight and entertain a motion for approval as presented. So moved. I have a motion by Councilmember Matt. Second. I have a second by Councilmember Cornell. That thing was about to die, but I have a motion. Uh, have a, a motion by Councilmember Matt, a second by Councilmember Cornell for approval, uh, item eight as approved for border engine rebuilders and diesel services. All those, uh, in approval indicate by a motion of aye. All those opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passing unanimously, six oh. You wanna go ahead and do this? I can take it out of turn, or can I? Okay, let's go ahead and do this because it, because now we're, we're about to get into a lengthy, lengthy situation. So, uh, there's a, um, mister, it's Cruz Munoz. Right there. Miss Cruz Munoz.
Yes.
Come forward. Now, I will have to, uh, before we start the time, I'll have to remind the council this is a non-agenda item. We cannot speak or address or ask questions, but we can direct staff into meeting with, uh, anyone interested on this topic. So just state only your full name, don't need an address, and then just quickly, what is, what is the topic?
Okay.
And then we'll start the time.
Yes, my name is Cruz Munoz, and we are all here from the south side of Odessa Sterling Park area.
Okay.
Um, we are here, uh, we are asking for, uh...
Bring it up a little bit, that way we can get it on record.
Okay. We are here because we are asking for paving. We don't have paved roads. Um, we are having issues too with littering, a lot of tires on the side of the roads, and something else? Oh, we are having trouble with the school buses. Um, they are leaving the kids on the highway three thirty-eight, three eighty-five, and it's getting a little bit dangerous. Yeah, please.
Just give us your full name for the record.
Okay, there we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm speaking in behalf of them. One of them is, uh...
I need your full name just for the record.
My name is Pedro Bonilla.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm speaking in behalf of them. One of them is my cousin, and I just bought a property that's right in front of where the bu- the bus used to drop their kids. And literally, they drop them off right off the side of the shoulder where vehicles, they're driving at seventy, seventy-five mile an hour. And just last week, I was behind the bus, right when the stop sign came out, you know, we stopped, and cars kept going, you know, in the passing lane. What happens if one of the kids' homework or something flies away? First thing you're gonna know, you know, I, I don't even wanna say it, you know, I mean, they could get ran over. Uh, we've seen this issue many times, and they're having an issue with the school that, from what I hear from them. Uh, they don't, they don't wanna go in down the county roads to go drop the kids off. So, I mean, if there's video needed of evidence where they're dropping the kids off, that's, that's the complaint they have more than anything, the kids, so. Yes, and the school district does not want to go inside the county road to drop the kids off. So, I mean, I remember when I was in school, I come from Texas Panhandle, a small school by the name of Pringle Morris. They drove down the county roads. I mean, it's the same state. I don't see why the laws change. I mean, unless it's something that has to do with the county, but I don't see why. I mean, they fixed the roads, and roads are good to go in to drop the kids off, but that, that's the question they have.
I will have to, once again, remind everybody, and I'm gonna say this both in English and Spanish, this is a non-agenda item. The council cannot ask any questions because it's not on the agenda. It would be against the law for us to discuss it.
Okay.
So we cannot engage in any type of conversation or questions. Uh, lo que está pasando como este, este caso no está en la agenda. Por ley no lo podemos discutir, no podemos hacer preguntas. Ahorita no sabemos varias cosas, so la cosa es, lo que vamos a, 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 a manejar de la ciudad que hablo con ustedes y agarra información de que está permanente para nosotros a saber qué es la situación. Pero como no está en la agenda, no podemos a preguntar preguntas. Once again, we will, uh, instruct staff to get permanent information that is pertinent for us to be able to know what the situation is because it's a non-agenda item. We cannot get into discussion. We can't ask questions.
Oh, no, no, that's fine.
Go ahead, you, you can go ahead and talk.
I just got a quick question. Um, who could give me guidance on who we need to talk to first? And, you know, I'd just like to help them because before I bought that property, that's where they dropped the kids off on the side of the shoulder, and now that I wanna build or do something there, I, I just feel it's not right to just drop off kids, 'cause some kids walk. They, they walk a mile or two down dirt roads to get home, and anyway, I, we could sit here and go forever. I just need... Who, who do you recommend I need to start and talk to about this?
There it is. I think that what we can do is instruct our, uh, our city manager and our staff to find out, locate, find out pertinent information that will be beneficial for the council to address an issue if it's a city issue.
They're gonna go out so we can go on, carry on and get some more information.
We're gonna go ahead and move on with our, uh, our agenda. We're gonna go on to ordinance item nine. Consider mending and adding a section to the City of Odessa Personnel Policies and Procedures, specifically Section six point one oh five, Media Relations, Social Media. Mr. Beckman?
What this does is, over the years, and if y'all have looked at our person, personnel policies, most of them haven't been updated in years. Well, social media, media relations and all has evolved considerably over the past few years, and this just tightens it up a little bit. It, uh, centralizes most of the media relations within the comms department with oversight from the city manager. It's not to shut anything down at all, but we have to have a, we should have, it's up to you all, a unified voice going out into the city. Our current communications director, Monica, has done a better job of that than anybody I've seen as far as getting that out there, and so this tightens it up and actually puts a policy in that we are probably one of the few organizations in town that doesn't have. And thanks to Legal for really working with us to help come up with this, this policy.
Counsel, any questions? I just opened up the dice. Yeah. So my only question was the social media. I think we just all know about TikToks. It is excluded though for, as far as communications.
By state law.
By state law. That's what I thought. Just wanna make sure.
Uh, to, to some people's chagrin, by state law, it is excluded. We can do reels, and Monica's been doing, and her team have been doing some great ones here lately.
Yeah. Just make sure it's clear for everybody.
Yes. No TikTok. We don't like the CCP.
Okay. No other questions or discussion? Uh, city manager, do you need action on this?
Yes.
And this doesn't, um, prohibit any city employees from voicing their opinion or on social media or...
About the city or about in general?
In general.
In general, no. We're, we're not responsible for what a city employee says about, uh, who they're gonna support for president, you know?
Very good one.
So, text, social media, anything, just cautious when you press send. You're taking it upon your own responsibility. And it's not, we're not, the city is not, uh, be held responsible, liable for an individual's, uh, content.
When you get real upset and you decide to post something as a city official or all, wait till tomorrow. Most of the times you won't, or you'll make a really good post. That's not in the policy. That's just good policy.
Right.
The common sense, yes.
Counsel, no discussion or further, if there is no further discussion or comments, I need to maintain a motion on item nine as presented by City Manager Beckman. Also moved. Have a motion for approval by Councilmember Vasquez, I have a second. Second by Councilmember Thompson, all in favor indicating by saying aye. Aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passing unanimously. Resolution, we're gonna move on to item ten, consider allocating ARPA funds in the amount of eight million fifty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty, fifty-three dollars and one zero cent. Ms. Bandit?
And I'm gonna brag just a little bit. Kaylee and her, her team have done an amazing job taking y'all's suggestions and, and hopefully now we got something to, uh, approve.
Did you, did you make the math work?
Uh, working on that. That's actually y'all's decision, so we'll see if we can get it there. So, yes, thank you, Mr. Beckmeyer, for that. Um, this has been a long journey here to this point in time, but tonight we are allocating the remainder of the funds, which is eight million fifty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars that you'll see here. So what I've done is I have laid this out, um, starting down here where, where this green box is. On the left, you'll see all of the projects that were discussed at work session and kind of agreed upon that we wanted to consider. So we have Odessa Fire, we have Odessa Police, we have the Darrington Plant, and then we have the CAD system for Public Safety Communications and the North Dixie Walnut Avenue Project. So what we will do now is we'll go one by one, and if you agree with the request amount here, you can just tell me, and I'll put it by your name, or if you would like to see a different amount there, then I will notate that as well. Um, and we'll just go from there if there's any further discussion or any projects that you want to add to the list.
Uh, before I, Ms. Bandit, what's the total of everything that they, that's been requested?
The total of everything that has been requested so far, and I did add in, um, the project we discussed in work session, is eight million one hundred and one thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars. So we are just a hair over.
Okay, so, and let's make it easy.
Yeah.
Let's just make it easy. Take one item and just shave the difference. I would, uh...
So if we wanna start with Councilwoman Swanner, we can?
Um, I agree on all of them.
Okay.
And I'll be the first to, to go down. We, we've discussed this over and over with the ARPA funds. The only addition, um, we had a presentation today. Unfortunately, there's not enough money to do the three hundred thousand, but I do think that we could do the two hundred and fifty thousand, and that would put us right where we need to be.
Yeah, take, take, yeah, take the harmony home, eliminate the three hundred thousand, put it into two fifty, and see where we're at.
Uh, I think you added another... Go back up on that, yeah.
I wish we had that kinda money.
A few too many zeros.
We'd be doing, we'd be doing some roads. Promise. If we had that, we definitely would be doing that. I'll try in a few seconds. It's gonna get worse.
Yep.
So that would bring the total to...
If you're, if you're under, bump it up, bump it up, bump up to two fifty. Eight zero five, that's it.
Yeah.
Okay, so I did the math earlier. What the spreadsheet is doing is...
Six, it's, it's, uh, the s...
Yeah, there it is.
Two fifty, there it is, yeah.
That's why you got that award, Jason.
So what the spreadsheet is doing is it won't actually take it away unless there's a consensus here.
Right, okay.
So if we add in two fifty, there's about seven thousand dollars left to be allocated.
Just leave, put it, put in the two fifty.
Two fifty seven.
Two fifty seven.
Yeah, two fifty seven.
So we'll be getting two hundred fifty seven thousand eight hundred and one.
Okay, so here's what I'm gonna do. I'm just gonna put these amounts in all those plots as if everyone agrees.
Yeah.
Okay, so you can see. That leaves one hundred and eighty seven dollars, so that would be two hundred and fifty thousand one hundred and eighty seven dollars. Here.
Yep.
So that would be the project breakdown, starting here.
Very good.
Works.
Counsel, do we have a consensus for all that?
So I'll entertain a motion to pass the the ARPA funds as is presented by Ms. Banda, adding, uh, said one hundred and fifty, one hundred and fifty thousand one eighty seven to Harmony Home?
Two fifty.
Two fifty.
Two fifty, I meant two hundred and fifty, one eighty seven. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, but Councilmember Swanner's second by Councilmember Thompson. All in favor, indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, indicating by saying nay. Motion passed, you announce.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, everybody. So we, I know everybody was holding their breath because he thought we were gonna take some ARPA funds, but congratulations. Thank you very much for that presentation, what you do for Odessa. Okay, so we are moving on. All right. Item eleven, consider allowing Odessa Fire Rescue to partner with TDM to use the Firehouse Six Classroom as an emergency operations center in case of significant event in Odessa, Hector County, for the surrounding area.
Chief Cotton.
Mayor, counsel, thank you. Consider allowing Odessa Fire Rescue to partner with TDM to use Firehouse Six Classroom as an emergency operations center in case of a significant issue in Odessa, Hector County, or the surrounding areas. Currently, we have an EOC in the basement of of PD. If something significant happened here, I'm not sure that it would meet our needs. TDM came in, Texas Department of Emergency Management came in and talked to us about, well, a couple of months ago, and we actually had a meeting at Station Six Classroom with all the regional TDM representatives from the different cities in the region and and entities. And after they got a look at our classroom, they thought this would be perfect. And so they, so they reached out and asked if we could partner with them to use our classroom at Station Six if anything happens as an EOC at the time. And and my my biggest thing with that, and what I, I think it's a great thing, anytime we can partner with an agency like that, if something happens here in our city, they're gonna take care of us. We're gonna be able to ask for resources, and we're gonna get them. And this will help that, and it'll help our partnership with them as well.
So chief, are the stuff that's in the current operation center, but the, there's, I assume there's a bunch of computers, screens, whatever?
Honestly, I I can't speak real well to that. Chief Gerke, do you have any better information on our current EOC or shell?
I just assumed you'd move it over there, I guess is what I'm asking.
Well, we can.
Because you couldn't wait until you had an emergency.
Right.
You know, just specifically from from what Chief Cotton is saying, I absolutely agree because right now what you have is an EOC in the basement of the police department that has the access to radio consoles and things like that, right? But you also have dispatch that is just less than a block away. That's not ideal in an emergency, particularly if you have a natural disaster. So this, yeah, this this would be a much needed thing.
Geographically dispersed.
Absolutely.
Sorry, I'm short. Um, right now, our current EOC, there is five consoles where there would be three radio positions, two call-taking positions, and it's almost like a huge walk-in closet. So once we get five dispatchers in there, we're like this. And if you're in there for several hours, it is very inconvenient. But and then we couldn't have the extra space for the extra groups that need to come in for an actual emergency operations center. And I know at Station Six, I've kind of did a little bit of research in the way it was originally built. All we have to do is drop some ethernet cables, and we have our remote CAD system and a remote phone that we can just bring in there and set up quickly when needed.
And we're already in the process of getting the ethernet cables installed and taken care of.
Okay, good.
All right, well, good. Any other questions?
I was gonna ask for the county. Judge Fossett would be in control of that for a county emergency, and he could locate there too as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Now entertain a motion to approve item eleven as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Monta. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cornell. All in favor, indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing, indicating by saying nay. Motion passed, you announce.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Move on to item twelve. Consider release of drainage easement in Section Three, Block Forty One Township to Midland County. Hardline?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, sir.
Cop Pendley and Associates, on behalf of ICA Development, is requesting to release one point thirty six acre portion of the existing sixty foot wide drainage easement in exchange of a one point forty five acre drainage easement. This exchange will coincide with the plant development, in this case Harmony Schools, and abandon a one point thirty six acre portion that is no longer needed. The staff review to propose drainage easement, release and recommend approval of the attached resolution. And so in this exhibit, you can see this blue portion, we are abandoning the blue portion and shifting it closer to the school side, just release that portion of the land that cannot be used, so that's the main reason. And I can answer to your questions.
So the the drainage that you're you're releasing is sixty foot wide?
Yes.
What's the proposed?
Yes, that is correct.
Thirty four, that's reducing. Uh, how you traverse, are you gonna traverse Mission Boulevard above or below? The existing drainage, how does it go across? Does it go over?
So we're not crossing.
You're not?
No.
Okay.
We're just releasing this blue portion and shifting it to this red, red line. So that it can coincide with the twenty five acre land.
Any questions, your district?
Well, you know, I'm just trying to figure out, it stops at the road. It's gotta go somewhere.
After, on the next side of the road, there's a big detention base, so it goes to that base.
So it's across? I know where you're going by.
Under.
Under.
Under. You're gonna go under it?
Under, under Mission Road.
Okay. There's a CRMWD line there though, isn't there?
Um, not in this location, no.
Okay.
It is, I think, north of that area.
North of that, yes, yes, yes. It is on Mission Boulevard though, I, I knew that. Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other questions?
If not, we entertain a motion to adopt the release of the drainage easement in Section Three, Block Forty One.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Swanner. All in favor, indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing, indicating by saying nay. Motion passed, you announce.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item thirteen, consider correcting administrative mistake resolution number twenty twenty one R dash seventy five regarding the donation lots of one through six, Block Forty, original town to Odessa College. Mr. Jones.
Mayor, counsel. So this is one of those administrative mistakes that we have got to lick the calf over again on, so to speak. So what we are going to do tonight is I'm gonna ask for a vote so that we can turn this from the city manager giving it to the mayor. Uh, so very simply, I just need a motion and a second and a vote. Prior administration failed to understand that where the Odessa College Downtown Park is was the Odessa American Building, which we purchased, then turned around and leased back out to them. It became therefore a municipal building site. So to do it the right way, we've got to approve this tonight. And then I believe in a couple of weeks, Mr. Beckmeyer will talk more about the ordinance. They actually convey it because you don't convey municipal building sites by resolution. You do so by ordinance. And so there we go.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Have the Odessa College officials been notified? I'm assuming?
They they have been notified. In fact, this afternoon, Daniel Harper, who represents them, the attorney from Schaefer, he was here. And we we've already discussed this here a couple of weeks ago, and in fact, he was here this afternoon. And I I had suggested to him that, uh, once Mr. Beckmeyer does the ordinance in a couple of weeks, that you may want to, mayor, you may want to execute the deed on March the twelfth.
We'll execute and make make a presentation to Odessa.
Yeah.
Odessa College.
And 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 mayor, my two cents, you execute it, we'll get Norma to to do the noting and everything. You give it to them and say, y'all are responsible for for filing it, not us.
So right now, Dan, and correct me if I'm wrong, legally tonight, this is, doesn't change anything. This is housekeeping.
No, this is housekeeping, what we're doing here now, this.
Next two weeks.
The ordinance.
We will change things.
Yes.
Then.
Yes, that's when everything, but this is simple housekeeping.
Four weeks, it'll change.
Right.
We'll start the process. This is housekeeping. We own it.
Yeah.
We'll still own it.
And we're praying nobody gets hurt.
And then we'll give it away.
Yeah, and that's what we're gonna do. We, yeah, we will give it away, and the way we're gonna give it away will be under Local Government Code two seventy two point zero zero one J, which is to a higher learning institution, educational. So we will give it away, and that will benefit the citizens for the City of Odessa. And we will give it to them, is what we hope to do.
Any questions?
If not, entertain a motion for approval of item thirteen as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Vasquez. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Monta. All in favor, indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing, indicating by saying nay. Motion passed, you announce. Move on to item fourteen. Consider accepting Public Improvement District Pid petition from Bingbo Homes LLC at Windmill Crossing. Mr. Jones.
Mayor, counsel, so we are gonna simply accept the Pid. And the reason why we're gonna do this again is because we need to make sure the timing is correct on it. And we had a little run-in with the timing with some of the folks that are supposed to be here today, couldn't be here. So we want to go ahead, we want to accept the Pid again, and then what we're gonna do is they will be here on March twelfth. So we have a, we have a travel issue that's occurred, that they cannot be here.
That's good, that we're doing it correctly.
We're doing it, yes. And then it's gonna be ran in the OA, I believe, this weekend, and then we, but we want to make sure we do it right.
We have to run it for thirty days?
Uh, just a couple, yeah, just fifteen, couple, couple of times.
Any discussion by counsel? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept item fourteen.
Once then, sorry.
Accept the Public Improvement District Pid petition from Bingbo.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swanner. Second, second by Councilmember Cornell. Any further discussion?
Before I get elbow, mayor, let's move on with this one. Get this voted on because you might elbow me.
All those in favor, indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing, indicating by saying nay. Motion passed, you announce. Move on to miscellaneous. Consider recommendations for outside council regarding accept RFP offers, updates regarding seismic permits. Mr. Jones.
Mayor, counsel, Steve Postick is here. Uh, we've got, he's gonna bring you a few things here. And we're gonna discuss what our offers are on, and we're gonna talk about some seismic work and then what we're being offered on our.
Minerals?
Minerals, yes, sir.
All right, intake.
Steve, do you need the computer?
Mailbox money.
Do you need the computer? Okay.
So for for everyone in in the in the chamber, the council led by Councilman Thompson, we've gone into obtaining mineral rights for properties that the City of Odessa owns throughout the city, and it is basically mailbox money. This is something that's never been attempted or ascertained, which has been overlooked for decades. And today, we're gonna see seismic activity and value in minerals. That's exactly what we're gonna be talking about. This is something that we should have been doing decades ago.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I am Steve Postick with Brockett McNeil and Postick LLP in Midland, Texas. We have a basket of issues to address tonight. I believe that they are all good news, but I'm going to try to cover them in a disciplined manner. Uh, the first group is going to have to go with geophys, have to do with geophysical testing. Uh, as we heard at the last meeting that I appeared at, Dawson Geophysical, a very well-established geophysical testing company, has approached the city and asked for permission to use the city's roads and also roughly eight hundred acres of surface that is owned by the city to conduct three D seismic testing. Uh, over the past two months, uh, in cooperation with the city attorney, I have been negotiating with Dawson. They have, along with our input, I believe, come to a fair offer. They started at roughly a one hundred and twenty thousand dollar offer for the basket of rights that they would like to exercise in doing seismic testing. And they've come up to a final number that I'll break down in a moment for two hundred and twenty six thousand. So they have sweetened the pot significantly. That is no mistake. University of Texas Land System publishes every year a damage rate schedule, which I'm I'm seeing nods. I think everybody knows about the UL damage rates. And this year, in twenty twenty four, for three D seismic testing, the going rate is twenty five dollars per acre. After applying a series of calculations to the roadways in the areas that would be tested by Dawson, as well as the eight hundred some odd acres that the city has on the tax rolls, uh, we came up with that two hundred and twenty six thousand roughly number. There will be two agreements. The first is a right-of-way agreement, which has been hard traded by my firm and Dawson Geophysical. We, uh, just this afternoon, I believe, got very close to what the final agreement is going to look like. In addition, for the eight hundred city-owned acres, there's going to be a seismic permit. We have added an addendum to that permit. I brought drafts of all of this tonight, but suffice to say that I believe we're very, very close. What is important is that we've reached agreement, not, we've not reached agreement. Subject to this body's approval, we have reached agreement on what the compensation will be, and we believe it's fair. I think the most elegant way to to finish this transaction, if it squares with the desires of this body, uh, is to authorize the city attorney to work out the final details of the seismic right-of-way agreement and the permit. I think it will be less burdensome on this body than having an executive session and going over it in tortuous detail. So with all that said, to round it out, for the fee acreage and for the right-of-way agreement, based upon a twenty five dollar per acre metric for compensation, I believe what we'll be asking this body to approve tonight is to accept payment in the amount of two hundred and twenty six thousand nine hundred and eighty nine dollars and forty cents, subject to final agreement by the city attorney to the geophysical permit and the geophysical right-of-way agreement that will need to be signed. If we do take these issues in order, the next round of discussion will be a little bit more in depth. Forgive me, I'm an oil and gas attorney. I'm not a municipal attorney. Uh, to me, it would make the most sense if if it is the will of this body to a- Uh, to me, it would make the most sense if, if it is the will of this body to allow Mr. Jones to finish up this transaction, that perhaps we go ahead and vote on that and then move on.
It would be cleaner.
Counsel, any discussion, any questions? So, uh, on item eighteen, so the council needs to vote on approving, uh, the C M, Mr. Jones, to negotiate the finality of the, uh, of the, uh, seismic and the mineral rights. Uh, do we need to-
And, and we're all-
Do we need to vote on accepting the amount?
Yes, and we're also going to accept the two twenty-six.
Yes.
And, and this vote.
So we need a motion for, uh, authorizing the, uh, city attorney's office, uh, for negotiations and also in the amount of two hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine and forty cents? So I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Council, uh, Councilman Thompson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Martha, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passed unanimously. Okay, we're on, passed that, uh, that hurdle.
And now we're going to talk about-
What, we're going to speak-
The drilling.
Correct.
Yes.
Uh, we're going to talk about the more involved topic.
Yes.
So back in October, the city issued four requests for proposal covering four tracts of land, uh, inside the territorial jurisdiction of the city where the city owns the mineral rights. We do believe we found other tracts of land within the city limits, uh, where the city owns the mineral rights, but no one in our conversations with operators has expressed interest in those yet. These four tracts that we, uh, issued request for proposal on were ones that we understood were desirable from a drilling company's perspective. Uh, as a result of those October four twenty twenty-three bids, we received, uh, excuse me, request for proposal, we received back five bids. Four from Arrington Oil and Gas on each of the four tracts that we submitted bids on, and then one from Diamondback for one four-point-four-six acre tract that we, uh, submitted a proposal on. The Arrington bids all have an identical bonus metric. Uh, Arrington is offering thirty-five hundred dollars per acre, uh, on each of these four tracts of land. It, just to give it perspective, if we add it up, Arrington would be making a bonus payment of one hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred and sixty dollars to the city of Odessa. I'll talk about the other terms in a minute because they're the same as Diamondback and I'll just talk about them as a single bucket. Diamondback, uh, on the other hand, on the one tract that they submitted a bid on, offered eight thousand dollars an acre. Now, that was on a four-point-four-six acre tract. To try and simplify this, uh, just for example, if we accepted just the highest bids, so thirty-five hundred an acre on three tracts, which would be to Arrington, and then eight thousand an acre on the one tract that Diamondback bid on, uh, we would have, uh, compensation roughly of one hundred and fifty-six thousand, uh, four hundred some odd dollars. I'm sorry, I didn't calculate the change. If, and this will become important in a minute, we accepted only the Arrington bids, the city would get twenty thousand and seventy dollars less. Um, let's talk generally about the other differences between the bids. Uh, I would never want to talk down to this body, I'm sure, uh, many of y'all have, uh, oil and gas acumen just from having lived out here for a long time. Um, but these are all fairly, uh, standard offers, twenty-five percent royalty rates. Um, we promulgated a form in our request for proposal, which I know, uh, both Arrington and Diamondback would want to negotiate somewhat, uh, but like with the Dawson permits, it's something that the city attorney's office and I could work out. The real decision for this body is whether or not to lease now or later. Um, there is a prevailing school of thought that it is better to do it now than later. The main reason being that, uh, the best way to say it is, is this is the Midland Basin. Somewhere on the west side of the city of Odessa, there is a shelf, an uplift in the rock formation. The formations get thinner as you move from east to west to the city's western boundary. Um, it may be discovered, because this is, uh, kind of unconventional to go underneath the city, that the formations underneath the city of Odessa are not as good as they are, for example, underneath the city of Midland. Of course, they may also be better. What is not up for debate is that Arrington Oil and Gas has leased a significant portion of the acreage within the city limits already from people who own their minerals themselves. There is the possibility that if we do not lease at this time, that we could be forced into what is called non-consent status. Um, drilling occurs and we get paid based on a statutory metric that if we want to go into it, it's, it's a topic more for executive session. It would be pure legal advice I'd be giving you. So it is, uh, after a lot of discussions with Arrington, myself, and, uh, many discussions between Mr. Jones and I, it is our opinion that, um, it is probably in the city's best interest to accept the bids that we have and, uh, take the bonus money and start negotiating leases and lease our minerals and cross our fingers for a good well to come in. Good wells, excuse me. Um, this is a heady topic, I've done my best to give a thirty thousand foot overview. I would not be surprised if you have questions and I'm happy to answer them.
Counsel, just opened up for the dice, any discussion, uh, questions, concerns, uh, predictions, foresight?
Yeah, so Steve, the eight thousand from Diamondback is for the whole four-point-six net mill acres or is that per acre?
It is eight thousand per acre on four-point-six acres.
Right. So it's roughly four hundred thousand dollars, a little less.
N- no.
No.
Eight thousand times four-point-four-six would be thirty-five thousand six eighty.
Eight thousand times four-point, oh, four-point-six?
Four-point-four-six.
I'm thinking forty-six, sorry.
I wish.
I wish. Yeah, I'm sorry. My bad. Okay.
The four tracts, the two, the acreage size would be?
Councilman, I knew you were going to ask that and I suddenly realized that I was going to have to do math in front of the city council.
I was thinking forty-six acres. I wish it was forty-six acres.
Across the four tracts that we submitted, uh, that we issued proposals on, it is thirty-eight point nine six acres total.
But Steve, we've also located, uh, Keith has also located a few other acres.
Correct.
But they are not currently being sought right yet.
Not yet. Uh, uh, so to the city attorney's point, yes, uh, my firm has done some work and identified some other acreage where we think the city owns minerals.
Yes.
We have not submitted requests, we're not issued requests for proposal on those yet because we don't know if they're desirable. I'll, uh, tell it to the city council straight, these projects by Arrington are going to get drilled.
Yeah.
Um, they will probably be outcome determinative on whether or not the play moves further west, towards the western edge of the city.
And they're going to know that they're drilling. So where are the, where are the drill sites, Steve? West of I twenty?
They are north of I twenty, uh, i- if the city council knows where the old Coke refinery is, the old Coke plant by the train tracks?
Mm-hmm.
Just north of there. That six hundred and forty acre section, there's actually an open three hundred and twenty acres, relatively open. In my understanding, this is from Arrington's bid, is that that is where they're going to put their first surface locations.
Yeah. And so after going back with Steve, back and forth, back and forth, I mean, uh, we would be crazy to turn it down. We've got to, we've got to take it, this is, like the mayor said, this is mailbox money.
Yeah.
For the city that's never been done before. We got to take it. That's my two cents.
You've been marking on this for a while.
Yes, ma'am.
This is last October.
Yeah.
So, anyway, when Arrington came to us, so. Mayor, I'd make a motion to accept the, uh, the, uh-
Diamondback.
The Diamondback and the Arrington bids for the acreage.
If I may-
With the twenty-five percent royalty.
If I may make one clarification, Councilman Thompson, uh, I'd phrase it a little bit like the Dawson. Uh, we're going to accept the bids subject to negotiation of a final oil and gas, uh, lease agreement.
I'll amend my motion to that.
So, many a motion to authorize the-
City attorney to negotiate, yeah.
Negotiate the, uh, the royalties and the, uh, per acre cost with, uh, all those are in bid, uh, they have submitted proposals, twenty-five percent.
Good.
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Cornell, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you much for the negotiations and, uh, and continued.
And, and Mayor, I will say Steve is, is terrific. He really is, he knows his stuff and, and he is, he is, he's very easy to work with.
Well, good. Let's pray for a hundred barrel a day.
That's what we're praying for.
No, uh, production.
If you go for a thousand.
These days, Mayor, the, the, the hot zone's going to be twenty-four hundred barrels a day on a well.
Yeah, well, that always starts there and then, but we want it to settle.
And it will settle.
Roads, water, sewer.
It'll help us a lot. Steve, thank you so much for your hard work.
Thanks, Steve.
Tell Keith thanks as well.
I will. Thank you all and I hope you back here soon.
We're going to move on to item sixteen, Appointment Boards. Ms. Aguilar?
Mayor and Council, for the Board of Survey, reappoint Eddie Shelton for downtown Odessa, appoint Norberto Brito. Can y'all receive his application?
For which one?
Downtown Odessa.
Norberto?
Brito.
Brito. Brito, Brito, okay.
For the Midland Odessa Urban Transit District, reappoint Tim Harry, who has agreed to serve. For the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, appoint Tim Hernandez.
On which one?
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec. Timothy Hernandez?
Timothy Hernandez.
And for the zoning Board of Adjustment, appoint Priscilla Contreras as a full member.
She's an alternate now?
Yes, she's currently alternate.
Priscilla Contreras?
Yes.
Go ahead.
One more. Uh, for, uh, the alternate, uh, appoint Norberto Brito. So that would be, would it replace Craig Spoh?
On the alternate. Uh, Easy Rider, we have the application, do you want to come in?
So they can leave.
Okay. We need to, all right. We are so far behind on that one. Okay. So we have, um, you're doing one by one. Uh, we have Eddie Shelton for Board of Survey. We have a motion by Councilmember-
No, uh, so moved.
Uh, Councilmember Cornell, do I have a second?
Second.
Council, uh, second by Councilmember Martha, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.